Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Excellent.
Excellent. Excellent. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Mr. Silver. This is, if we could, if you would mind grabbing those slides. This is a super exciting presentation that we have been looking forward to giving. And there will be one, two, three, four, or five of us presenting tonight, right? I'm going to do a little of it. I'm our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Christine Zimmerman, will do a piece related to curriculum. John Pascal, the Principal of our high school, will do a piece, as well as our architects, Mike Milliman and Rick Tokarsky. And the reason that I tell you all of that is because this process has included all of us, members of our Board Facilities Committee, as well as many people in the audience tonight who have made up a committee that has looked into what we can do to further develop our STEAM program. STEAM, as everyone knows, stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. You've got the clicker.
I do.
Awesome. Click away. We'll turn it on and click away.
I'm trying. Nothing.
Nothing?
I got nothing.
You got nothing. I got Kyle.
It's brand-new.
It's a new clicker.
What'd you say?
It's good. I just moved it.
Are we good? Are we good? Go back. Can you go back one? Go forward? Sorry, everyone. Okay. So T stands for technology, which wasn't working. Every decision that we make in our district should always, always be related to instruction and curriculum. So when we started looking at STEAM, we wanted to have an instructional goal. That was to cultivate our students to be innovators, fact-ress, educators. Oh, you're just, I didn't read the front thing. You're all right. This is working, Nancy. Kyle, would you just, do you want to click?
If you want to, sure.
We're going to start this again shortly.
Sure.
Okay. We want to cultivate our students to be innovators, educators, leaders, and learners for the 21st century. Go ahead, Kyle. We want students to take thoughtful risks, to engage in experiential learning, persistent problem-solving, embrace collaboration, and work through the creative process. To realize this goal, students need to have integrated technology throughout their learning spaces. They need to have interdisciplinary experiences that allow for blended learning and problem-solving learning. And they need to have opportunities to work in small groups so that they can learn from each other. Once we had this goal in mind, we wanted to form a committee that was very representative of our district, because it couldn't be a decision of one person or just a few. In this case, it's a decision to move forward and to plan by many. So if you take a look at this list, you'll see teachers at the high school, many of whom are here tonight. You'll see supervisors at the high school. You'll see administrators. You'll see board members. You'll see the Director of Curriculum. You'll see the Supervisor of Integrated Technology. You'll see our Facilities Committee members, as I said. You'll see our architects. And you'll also see a name in the second column, third down. His name is Joshua Cohen. Couldn't be here tonight, but he works for the New Jersey Department of Ed. He is the Chief Innovation Officer. He was actually key in helping us decide how we could go about researching what we could possibly do on our high school campus. Thank you, honors.
Yes. Excellent. Okay, we have wonderful STEAM courses already at the high school. We're really proud of our offerings. They're very diverse, and they hit in all of the STEAM areas. What you see in yellow at the bottom are our new courses for this school year. So Computer Programming and Design, Humanoid Robotics, and the Technology and Engineering Principles were new for students this year. Here are proposed courses for next year to those board members who are on the instructional committee. We have yet to talk about these, but this is what we are thinking about. AP Computer Science Principles, that's a multidisciplinary approach to teaching the underlying principles of computing. Biotechnology is the crossroads of biology and technology. So think about when you have a 3D printer that makes an artificial limb, or a knee replacement, something like that. That's the science of biotechnology. And T-Cubed Innovations and Inventions will be a maker-space course where students will tinker and learn and work on projects of design. So that's proposed for next year. And so innovative courses need innovative spaces. Right now, we're fitting the STEAM courses in a traditional high school, in traditional high school spaces. So often, we have to, you'll see the word retrofit highlighted there, because that's what we have to do. We have to retrofit our existing spaces to match what we need our teachers and students to be able to do. So John's going to give you a little walk-through of the high school to show you what that looks like right now.
Okay, so this is some of our space for robotics class that's housed in the back of, you know, a small closet in the back of a classroom where we're teaching humanoid robotics. Go ahead, Kyle. This is where we do our first, we're in building five here, a piece of building five. This is where we do our first, this is where we do our first robotics club. First robotics club is a huge undertaking. There are lots of schools, pretty much all Bergen County schools, even schools, even the Catholic schools like Don Bosco and St. Joseph now started to add robotics. This is where we do our first robotics. We have to build a pretty big robot and have that ready for competition, and that happens in the second and third marking periods. So that's our space for that. This shot is one of our science classrooms. All that stuff you see crammed over there is for the research, the research and design STEAM class. Can you do another one for me? Got some more. Okay? And part, part of the problem with those two pictures you just saw is we're tight on science spaces. It is, we use a classroom as a swing classroom. We just, when we're doing the research and design course, it's really confining for us. This is building seven. This is the hallway in building seven. So we spill out into here because we don't have a space. We have a computer lab there. We have woodworking there. We do have another small room that kids can create things in, engineering mechanics, but we spill out into this as an instructional space. And then for professional development, this is the ridge. This happens to be their all-purpose room, cafeteria, auditorium, capitorium at the high school level. If we do professional development and it's happening during the school day, we have to displace students, move courses. We only have actually one classroom that opens up into a double classroom, but in order for us to use that, we're displacing, you know, six or seven classes out of this room, six or seven classes out of that room. So we lack that space.
So we knew that we had good curriculum in place already. We knew that we were teaching STEAM/STEM-related courses. We knew that we wanted to add more courses, so we had that foundation. And we knew by taking a look at our facilities that what we want to do, we couldn't necessarily get there if we didn't have a space in order to accommodate it. But the question that we came, we kept talking about was, well, what does that look like? What does that mean? What do we need? What kind of spaces do we want to have? So for the last 13 months, we've been working toward tonight and presenting this to you. And back in October, we put together that committee that you saw with all those people, and we started talking about our courses and what we wanted to do. And it was those initial discussions that changed kind of those new courses that were moving forward, because we were hearing directly from the people that were teaching the courses and saying we want to do something differently. On November 3rd, we invited Joshua Cohen. Christine had met him in a couple of workshops that he was at, and he was real interested in this, because he had been visiting schools throughout New Jersey that had programs and facilities in place already. So it was because of our discussion with him at that meeting with the committee that we were able to, on November 14th, take a little school bus straight here from Maual and spend the day visiting three different schools. And we'd like to show you those a little bit. Our whole committee went to Mount Olive High School. We went to Morristown High School and Dwight Englewood. Mount Olive and Morristown have their STEAM/STEM facilities within their current buildings, so they, they did some retrofitting inside of their building and expanded what was currently there to something else. Dwight Englewood is the last set of pictures that we'll show you. That's a $20 million facility dedicated entirely to STEM education, STEAM education. So let's look at Mount Olive. So we looked at Mount Olive. Mount Olive, their mascot is the Marauders. So they call their section for, that they work on with all of these STEAM/STEM courses, they call it the Mill. So that's the Marauder Innovation Learning Lab. That's how they branded their building, which we thought was, was really neat. And we started to notice some similar things, and I hope you will as well as you go through this. We noticed open space. We noticed movable furniture. We noticed high ceilings. We noticed creative and innovative spaces for kids that were totally different from the traditional world that our kids live in. Mount Olive had a professional development area. That's Dennis Fair Texting. That is a professional development area, which was used twofold, we learned. They not only use it for professional development of staff, they could have parent meetings in there, but it was also used for students as well. So it was kind of multifunctional space. This right here is Morristown. Morristown's a little bit different. They had just completed, they had just completed their construction. You'll notice, again, movable furniture, open space, lots of technology. Same kind of thing here. Go back one, Kyle. It's okay. Same kind of thing here. All the way in the back of the room, you'll see all of that glass there. Those were movable glass doors. That room could divide and have smaller instructional spaces, or it could be one big, large space that had a little platform-type stage thing in, in the front. But again, we learned a lot from, from looking at this, because we were learning about furniture, we're learning about spaces, and we're learning about use. This is that $20 million facility. So we ended our day looking at, oh my gosh, if we could have everything that we wanted, this would absolutely be it. $20 million facility, completed, I think, a couple of years ago. This is one of the labs. The way they designed the building, it was two floors, and each of the corners had science labs. One was physics, one was chem. But as you can notice, there are a lot of open spaces. One of the things I said in the beginning was the ability for kids to be able to collaborate. So you're out of your whole, your desks in rows, and you're into bigger spaces. Go ahead, Kyle. This was the space walking in, which was so impressive, to say the least. In the bottom right-hand corner is the Dwight Englewood Robotics Lab. Interestingly enough with this space, it was awesome. It was open. It was locked, but the students had the keys and the code. It was their room. They took care of it, and anyone who walked past was able to see what was going on. And the biggest thing they said, the Supervisor of Mathematics, who was walking us around, said when they were building and they were doing and they were racing, they did it outside of that space. They kept everything in there, locked, but the interest level developed, because kids could see what other kids were doing and become excited about that. Movable furniture, couches, yes. Kids, the ability to be able to collaborate. That wall in the back, that white wall in the back, we were so impressed, because kids could write on it. And they weren't writing, you know, Joey Loves Sally. They were writing equations. They were writing things that were educational. It was all appropriate, but it would be there the next day. So we did that meeting on the 14th. We spent the day. We were exhausted. We came back on the 17th, and we debriefed a little bit. And we did some pro and con lists, and they were very similar, even with the 15 or 18 of us there. That open space is the movable furniture, the inviting, the ability to be able to show things. On December 7th, we collected all sorts of ideas from the committee, because it's important when you start doing something that you're all on the same page. And you can often all be on the same page by, by putting together a mission statement. So we want to show you what that looks like. And I'm going to read it to you, because it's good. "The Thunderbird Think Tank, T-Cubed Thunderbird Think Tank, like Maual itself, is the meeting place, blending science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics in an innovative way that empowers our students to research, to design, to engage, to collaborate, and to ultimately build visionary ideas and each other." T-Cubed, preparing tomorrow's global thinker today. I sound like a commercial when I say that. One of the reasons that we wanted to do that is when we, what we learned when we walked into Mount Olive, right? Mount Olive had on their wall, written in beautiful penmanship script, their mission statement, and you couldn't help but walk back past it and stop and catch those key words, and then walk into the space and feel what those key words were telling you it was about. So that was one of the reasons that we wanted to do this. So as a result of everything we did, and what we learned, and the spaces, and developing this statement, I think that's going to move on to you, John, at this point. I have one more? No, a couple more, actually. We met again on December 20th, I'm sorry, with the full STEAM committee, including board members. And although we had kept the board members apprised the first couple of months, they hadn't sat and met all the committee members. So we had a marathon meeting here all morning, one morning, on a cold December day. And one of the things we did is we divided up our big group into subcommittees, and those subcommittees worked on different things that were aspects of the building. The Facilities Committee did a, took a field trip. They went across over to building seven to see what was going on there. They walked the high school campus to say, okay, if we're going to build an addition, where's the best place to do this, and why is this the best place to do it? And then we had committees in here looking at curriculum more, and we had committees in here looking at equipment. Because one of the things that the architects kept saying to us is, if you want to do this, do this. You have to tell us what you need, because the space needs to be built for what you need, what your housing and, and what you're teaching. We need to design it so it is what you want. So that's what we did on May 10th. And then we took a little bit of a break. There was a bunch going on, and we reconvened in May. We met with our architect, who was with us at that big December 20th meeting. And I have to say, somewhat impressed only, because here was a big group of people that were so excited and so engaged in what it was we were doing. So on May 14th, we came back again, and Mike and Rick just brought us some preliminary drawings, what it could potentially look like. Not inside, not outside, not even conceptually, just the space on the property and what that would look like. And then, there should be one more slide after this. I'm thinking we met again in June, and we met with our whole committee, because what we wanted to do in June is to present a presentation similar to this, but we wanted every committee member to be part of it, because we've been a team from the beginning. This wasn't just one group saying, let's do it. It was all of us saying, we need it. And that's a different message that we, that we wanted to send. And on June 14th, we did a public presentation, and that is on our website at this point.
Yeah, one more slide.
And I do, thank you. And on August 21st, we met with the architects again. We brought back our committee during the summer months, and they came in for a few hours one morning. And we sat, and we had plans all over the place, and we looked at what's there, and people commented, I need this, I don't need this, I want this, I don't want that, because we needed to get into the architects' heads as to what would make sense for us. Dwight Englewood makes sense for Dwight Englewood. Mount Olive made sense for them. That doesn't necessarily mean it would make sense for us. So on August 21st, we met. There's one more slide after this. And then we wanted to funnel down, so to speak. So we looked at the big picture, and on September 7th, our architects came in. They spent the entire day at the high school, and they met with all of our instructors, right? Those people who are responsible for the curriculum that started this whole thing moving along. And they sat with each one of those instructors and supervisors and Christine, and said, what do we need in these spaces to make what it is work for the courses that you want? And it is as a result of that, that John is going to talk a little bit about what we anticipate this addition having within it, course-wise, and why. And then the architects are going to show you what that could potentially look like in a conceptual phase at this point, because we're not necessarily in that fine-tuning design development. Is that a correct statement?
True.
All right. So John, it's all yours.
So let's look at some of the STEAM addition highlights. We have the Thunderbird Think Tank, T-Cubed, where it'll allow us to bring the robotics out of building five for the first robotics club. It'll allow us to bring the humanoid robotics there. And also our Innovations and Inventions course, which is, which is formalized as a course where kids can do guided maker-space, if you will, okay? And it can also be a space where we can have appropriate staff members there during the day, so that students have a study hall or a free time during the day, they can go there and tinker. Lab spaces for the STEAM design and research, the computer modeling, our Capstone Independent Research and Internship Course, which we are in the process of running again this year. We had two students in it last year. I think we have six students in it this year. That happens outside of the school day with a teacher as a mentor. And our Technology and Engineering Principles course, and our Biotechnology course for those lab spaces. And then flexible space for large group interdisciplinary instruction and/or professional development. It'll give us the opportunity to have professional development without dislocating students. It gives us the ability to bring teachers here. Often, teachers in the county will go to a, to a building, like all math teachers, maybe all statistics teachers, or all algebra teachers, will go to a math roundtable. We never have them here, because we just don't have space for it here. We're always going somewhere else. It'll allow us to do that. It'll also allow us for larger instruction or interdisciplinary instruction. So an English teacher and a social studies teacher can be working on something together, bring those kids together in that space. We can also use that for our parent academy. A gallery to display our student, our student artwork in a visually exciting way, okay? It also gives, that gallery space also presents an opportunity for us and a space for us for our mindfulness course, which is outside of a classroom. There'll be an outdoor classroom space that can be used for instruction and some ample storage, which is sorely needed. So those are, those are the STEAM highlights, and I think now Dr. Shone is going to introduce the architects to give you some visual representation.
I do. I want to introduce our architects, who have really been with us side-by-side along the way, and have spent a great deal of time really listening to us. It's one thing to design something, it's another thing to do with what we have in mind. So Mr. Milliman and Mr. Tokarsky, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. So as Dr. Shone said, a lot of time effort has been put into the process, and like any project that we work on, it is a process. It's a, it's a team event. We spent a lot of time on the 14th meetings, meeting with the department heads, teachers, to get an idea of what these spaces could be and what they should be. And then the architecture really develops from that program. So we had some initial conceptual designs. The building has been sculpted a few times since September, and at this point, we'll go through the plan. And then we continue to evolve and refine the project to put more information on it. Mechanical, electrical things get built in later on, so there'll be a series of meetings that follow up. But right now, I'll go through quickly in the plan, just to orient you. To the right here is the high school proper. It's off the screen. I'm just going to focus on the addition. This is the extent of building seven here. So the, the building, the addition itself is located between building seven and the main high school. We originally had an outside, just sidewalk. Students would go between the two buildings. Well, we're proposing, and we'll see some exterior renderings following the plan, which will give you a visual perspective of what we're planning. So there's a, an exterior overhead canopy to connect the two buildings, so now we can traverse and be out of the weather. As we enter the building, we have the open instruction, so some of the programmatic elements that we just went through, talked about lab spaces, the open think-tank maker-space. So when we first come in, we see this open space, and it's meant to be used for flexible events, building robots, having small breakout groups, so it can be as flexible as we want. There's plenty of wall space, glass space. The other thing that we were trying to achieve there is, once you walk into the space, you see a lot of activity going on. So you can look into other lab spaces that are adjacent to the main space. We have two large lab spaces directly off of the main space, glass views into those spaces. The, the way that the labs are designed right now, the perimeter is all storage, which we heard, we need a lot of. We also have dedicated storage spaces throughout the addition for storing things safely. And then inside the classroom, the smaller tables are all movable, so it's flexible. We can rearrange these into different-sized groups, whatever the program or whatever the instructor needs for the specific program they're working on. We have a 3D print lab. It's accessible through the two labs, and there's glass, so students can see what's being printed in the 3D print lab. We also have another platter and a, other machinery in there to create student works. Small accessory mechanical and more storage space along the right side. Here, this space right here is the robotics lab, all glass enclosure. You see a lot of the students, as they're building their robots, they'll be stored inside the large ones for the, the club, and then also the, the smaller ones that are being done as part of the curriculum. Storage along the, the two walls for all of the different component parts. We have an overhead door, so it's more of a garage. You can open that glass door up, and you can drive your robot out into the main space here. And then also, inside the, the robotics lab, again, plenty of space for storing all of that, the components, the parts, that we need for the, for that program to, to be successful. Directly across from the robotics lab is that gallery space. So you'll see in the renderings that we're going to show, it's, it's designed to be a blue cube, as we're playing on that T-Cubed idea. And that is going to be an area where we are going to display the works of the students. Right now, they're kind of displayed in the hallway in building seven, so we want to have the ability to take the students' works and display them in an area where parents, administrators, and other students can go and see them in a kind of more organized setting. As we, as we continue to the back of the building here, we have additional lab space, flexible tables. And then we are considering this also for a professional development space. So if I needed to host an event, as Mr. Pascal was, was alluding to before, we could use this space. It does have a separator, a divider wall inside, where we could use that as smaller spaces are opened up as larger, so the lab space can be broken out into smaller spaces. We also have added toilet rooms in part of building seven, so we're taking some of the part, sorry. And that'll be used for bathrooms for the facility. In the rear, on the outside of the instruction area, straight across, so building eight is back here, which is the YMCA building. The outdoor lab is sitting right here, so the students can go. It's all glass again, to have outsour, outside lab classes, biology. We have an illustration that shows some ideas that could happen back there. So that is the plan. And Rick, you want to talk about one of the innovations?
Sure. I wanted to talk about the exterior architecture of the building. You got a sneak peek. A couple minutes ago, a subliminal message, just to give you a little teaser. But this is kind of an aerial view. The predominant architecture is that cube that you have, that we're playing off, that T-Cubed, which is the gallery space. It's kind of an icon for the campus. That's going to be comprised of aluminum storefront material, glass, which is insulated low-e glass, and also translucent panels. So what happens is, during the day, that lets a lot of natural light in. It's a good display space for art and, you know, different furniture making, you know, the different things that the students will create in the Thunderbird Think Tank. What happens at night is when the magic happens. That's going to basically glow from within, so it becomes a beacon for the whole campus. As you look at the front of the building, you have this sloped canopy, which kind of flows down and goes over to the high school, that creates the covered walkway during inclement weather. The front of the building, you see red tones and gray tones. We're working on the tectonics of the building. At this point, what we're considering is the options of brick or an architectural concrete masonry unit. So we're thinking masonry, durable materials that'll last over time. You also see a lot of glass and aluminum storefront. That lets a lot of daylight in. The insulated and low-e glass keeps a lot of the weather out. This is a head-on view, looking at it. You can see the iconic Thunderbird on the front of the building. Building, we broke down the mass of it using different scales, so that you don't have one overbearing building. It's broken down into smaller components, and it's all knit together with a glass and aluminum storefront. This is the outdoor lab space. We have a green wall. The outdoor lab is sandwiched in the back of that building. You have a lot of views, a lot of storefront looking back in. You have a lot of views, a lot of storefront, looking back into the lab space inside. We have mobile whiteboards and chairs, so that during good weather, students can come outside and have different learning environments. This is the main instructional space. When you walk in, you're seeing a view of the robotics lab. You see the gentleman in the back. He's, you can view him through the overhead garage door where the robots are accessed. So it really integrates that open flexible space with the robotics lab. A lot of flexibility is built into the space. We have high ceilings, lighting kind of exposed structure, and movable furniture from within. You're also looking at the left is that front vestibule lobby where you'd be entering the building. And in the background, you can see a painting on an easel, and that's the opening to the gallery space. This is another view looking at the lab in the right rear corner. Just to the right of that, that's the 3D printer lab. So you can view into those spaces, those labs. You can see what's going on. You can see students working and the things they're creating. Also, flexible furniture lounge area where students could collaborate within that space.
All right. So where do we go from here? The important parts, we have a bunch of hurdles we have to go through from a regulatory perspective. We have submitted our first aid project number from the Department of Education. We've received the project number. So this month, we're going to be submitting the information to them to let them know that we are, we're going to do, we're going to execute this project, or we plan to execute this project. In conjunction with that, we have to make a submission to the local planning board. They do a courtesy review to review the project. And they, they'll let us or the Department of Education know if they have any issue with the plan from a planning perspective. And at the end of this year, we are going to complete the design development phase. So a short six weeks from now, we'll have a little bit more detail on mechanical, electrical plumbing, building systems, refine a little bit finishes, flooring, ceiling. We start talking about materiality. And then in March, we complete our construction documents. And then from there, we go out to bid, look to award bids mid next year. And then around a 16-month construction period. And we open, anticipate for the September school year of 2019.
So that kind of gives you an overview of how we got here, what the building could, or facility addition rather, could potentially look like, what the next steps are moving forward. And Kyle is just going to bring everyone up to speed as far as the cost is concerned and where we're at and how this is being funded.
STEAM addition, we propose is going to be fully funded through funds that are in our capital reserve account. As of right now, or I should say as of June 30, 2017, we had a balance in the capital reserve account of slightly over $9 million. $9,37,223 to be exact. For this school year, we did budget withdrawal previously during the creation and development of the 1718 budget. We had budgeted to withdraw approximately $1.9 million for several different projects. Projects such as the HVAC systems at Ramapo, addressing some HVAC systems in classrooms at Ramapo Ridge and Joyce Kilmer, renovation to Building Five, and a renovation to the high school library. We also have projects that were previously funded and done in the district several years ago that are being closed out currently. We have that leftover funds from those projects that will be added back into the capital reserve account as well. That, the amount added back is going to be approximately $620,000. So with the just slightly over $9 million that we had at June 30, the $1.9 that we have budgets coming out, and the $600,000 going back in, we can say that we have an estimated amount of $7,722,223 available to us for this project. The total addition for this, for the STEAM project is going to cost approximately $4.4 million. This is inclusive both hard costs that's related to the construction of the building, as well as the renovation to Building Seven, new access driveway for the high school, and increased parking, as well as all the soft costs. Soft costs such as architectural costs and legal costs, furniture and construction management. After the STEAM addition, the $7 million that I mentioned previously that we have available to us and the $4.4 million allocated for this project, there'd be an ending balance in the capital reserve account of approximately $3,322,223. Thank you.
So at this point, Chris, if you wouldn't mind, just sit in the lights if you would. That concludes our presentation in regard to the proposed STEAM addition. So the question is, does anyone have any questions? First, I guess from the board, and if you're okay with this.
I have two questions for you. Once, this is a STEAM building. I would like to see the installation of solar panels along that walkway. That's a integral part of the technology of the day. I think it would serve the students well to have that, see how exactly solar energy works. I'm not asking for you to have storage capacity, but rather to see them as the sun is shining.
We actually looked at that, and the original building did have a solar component to it. But when we started talking about what that's actually going to cost, because it used to be really cheap enough to cost anything when there were a lot of programs coming back from the state and where you have power companies that will, you know, rent your roof to put, you know, to put a solar array up there. The problem that we ran into was there's not enough space there to make it viable for somebody to, you know, to pay to put that up there. So we're not going to get anybody to do it for us. There's really no more money in programs from the state. So we would be paying for it, and it would have been really expensive to do. And when we're looking at trying to keep a reasonable budget, that sort of, you know, that really kind of pushed it over.
I'm not looking for a farm up there.
Right.
Looking for maybe four or five panels.
Right. Originally, it was, if you look at the middle of the building, we actually had above the middle glass section, there was an area just about that size that was tilted up. And there were, you know, four or five panels up there. And, you know, what we thought would be cool to have that up there because of what the building is and have some sort of a display inside that big area that shows how much power is being generated and that type of thing.
You don't have to tie into the local utility, just that building.
And I don't remember what the numbers were, but when we looked at what just those few panels would cost, just sort of the cost versus benefit, it was a lot of money for what we'd have been getting.
We're also not in an optimal orientation to the sun there. So that was the other downside of it.
My other concern is the restroom facilities. And we spoke, and so he knows where I stand. You can't go back. If you look at the schematics, the main area has an adult bathroom, woman, adult bathroom, male over there next to the gallery. You do not have a student bathroom available within that complex short of going out those doors into the weather and around the other side where the student bathrooms are located. Since our storage area is here, there's no reason in the world that we couldn't look at the idea of putting in a small hallway to have the students be allowed to access those bathrooms, especially when you're having professional development meetings and things like that. So I think that should be considered. We mentioned all kinds of state laws that sort of prohibit some of the work. But I think, since I see this as a storage area, that room, I can't, no. You could turn it.
On the right side here?
Right there.
Over here?
No, no, down. Go across. Go across from there. We could put a hallway in there at minimal cost. It's not going to be load-bearing. And make it a hallway that they can access the bathrooms, which you're off seeing right now. There is a girls' room and a boys' room there. But I don't think it's possible for us to have the men's and women's bathroom be utilized by the students. Especially we have teachers from out of district coming to visit us. I don't think the cost would be that expensive. It's simply a temporary wall you're putting down as a hallway.
You're talking, you're suggesting making that just for staff, but not for students?
That's what it says there. Men's, you will, not the boys' and girls'. Seriously, yes.
We could certainly talk with the architects about that and see what about the guests, Mike? We can discuss what Peter is talking about and the use of the bappers and all of that. I understand what he's saying.
Yeah, absolutely. We would have a discussion and consider that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Does anyone from the public have any questions? Would you like to come into the microphone, please?
Good evening. John Fies in 20 Falcon Court. What's the square footage of the building?
A little under 9,000.
209, what's the?
A little under 9,000.
A little under 9,000. And what's that cost per square foot?
About $327. About $327?
Yeah, it's about $350.
$350. Is that good or bad or high or low?
Depends who you're asking, yeah. Yeah, that's the going way for public works projects of this scale.
What's that capacity? How many students does this building accommodate?
We're designing it for around 200 students, max capacity.
Now, besides Dwight Morrow, is there any other, any other school district that has anything like this in Bergen County?
I know that there are a lot of districts that have facilities within their current facility, whether or not there are other districts in Bergen County that have built something to this extent for this purpose. I don't believe so.
If I'm a student at Mawa High School, do I go to the STEM part, the STEM school in the high school? Or is it, in other words, is this a school within a school?
That's a great question. No, it is an extension of Mawa High School that has courses that are related. As there are courses within the high school, there are also courses within this building that are related to STEAM or STEM.
In Bergen County, are there any districts where there's a school within a school? A STEM school within a regular high school?
There isn't necessarily a STEM school. The academies are like that. Ramapo and Dean Hills also have their different university programs, which are specific to different areas within a school. John, am I?
Well, I think this is great. I congratulate you for doing something like this, because academics, wonderful. So I think it's a real addition to the district and an addition to Mawa, and something that hopefully everybody in town will be very proud of.
Thank you.
And I think it's important to note that the space is really going to be used by virtually every student in the building, not just the kids who are science kids or, you know, social studies pro kids will be in that space. It's not, the whole idea is integration, collaboration, cross-disciplinary work. So this gives us an opportunity to do some amazing things.
Thank you for your presentation there.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah Costran, and I live at 10 Brennade Air Drive. And I think it's a wonderful addition that you're talking about here. Because of the open nature of all of the, of this entire structure is, are there going to be several classes at the same time going on? But there's definitely some kind of division. I mean, I know there about the four Cs, collaboration, critical thinking, and all that kind of thing. But there will be some kind of division of?
No doubt. You've got three labs going at once.
Three labs going at once?
You have three labs going at once. You could have students in that center think tank area. You could have a mindfulness piece going on at the gallery. You could split up that third lab into PD. You could have PD in one section, and you could have a class in the other. Although it's class and it's open, there are doors. You know what I mean? So there is a division to what it is that's happening.
Okay. And I apologize because I did not hear your, I wanted to come back in June to hear your, the whole STEAM plan. For, is there a, is there a whole coding initiative that even starts at kindergarten? Because I know that that is available, and Pearson is going to be launching, you know, new coding and science curriculums that integrate that kind of thing.
Yes, we have coding classes at the high school. They do some coding at the middle school. We're do hour code district-wide, pre-K up to grade 12. And we're looking at integrating coding into classes.
And when you're talking about integrating coding, are you working with certain providers that are out there right now doing that?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, all right, all right. I think that was all the questions that I have. But it sounds really wonderful. But while I think this is very important on the high school level, I'm very aware of what's going on around the country. And it starts in kindergarten, coding classes. And they're doing, you know, the little bits.
Yep.
They're already doing.
George Washington School actually has that in their maker space.
They have little bits?
Yeah, it's a resource. So there's nothing yet that we have chosen as far as a program. We have some pilots going on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Michael Wong. I live in 20 V Schuwsberry Court. Wow. I've been resident of Mawa for 20 years. This is my first board of ed meeting. Due to Ms. Schoen's email. And the reason that caught my attention was this STEAM program. Question to the board is, I've only been here for half an hour. I'm just so excited about this. Are there any plans or ideas of getting parents involved? I'm not saying especially, you know, building the building or teaching a class. The reason I say that, I'm the associate vice president for the Academy of Model Aeronautics. We have, it's a national membership of 200,000 members. We start from fifth grade, kids of young ages, adults of old ages, and anywhere in between. I represent District Two. There's 11 districts. Basically, I handle north and New Jersey, but District Two is New York and New Jersey. And I also belong to a model airplane club called Bergen County Simon Flyers. We fly out of Saddle River County Park. Where I'm going with this is every year in Ridgewood High School, there's a super science stat around the beginning of March. Basically, all the kids of middle school, high school, they have their little tables and science fair. And we, as a club, bend over backwards to help them out, to give presentation. I actually, I'm a mechanical engineer, so I get up to the audience. I talk about flight dynamics, physics, and things like that. And not that I don't want to help Ridgewood, but it kind of pleased me. But every year I go there, I bite my tongue and I said, why can't I or we do this for Mawa? Only because, maybe because of my ignorance of, you know, no programs like this, or how do we build a program like this? I tap, I can tap into a lot of resources at what we call AMA Academy of Model Aeronautics. We have, actually, we just signed up a kid who's 11 years old, lives in Mawa. He wandered into the park. But anyway, what I'm going with is, and it's so much flying and saying, hey, I want to do that. And now his parents are saying he's totally obsessed with aviation. We actually, as a club, bring the activities, like little model airplanes that the kids build. We teach them about building airplanes. We're teaching why a plane flies. There's also a lot of electronics. And also, we encompass airplanes, helicopters, and of course, the explosion and drones.
We have them.
Right, that's good. That's excellent. And I'm.
Is Ridgewood?
Yeah, yeah. Every time I go there, it's like, why can't I do it here? So my question is, can parents get involved? I would, I would like to donate my time.
Yes.
Right now, I'm kind of semi-retired, so I would.
You said, well, are we saying yes?
Okay.
Two things.
Okay, because also.
Ridgewood's not going to have this.
They won't, they won't. They're doing it right for school. It gets crowded. But we, I actually can get the AMA to bring a trailer here for free.
Trailers?
A trailer? What a truck that pulls. And inside the trailer has.
Here's my card.
Here's mine.
It would also really be wonderful if you would meet our science supervisor on your way out.
Oh, okay, good.
By my direction tomorrow morning.
And my son is a sophomore in Mawa High School.
May I have a card too?
Sure.
No, this is awesome. This is great.
So the thing with the drones is, there's a lot of regulations, a lot of rules. And, you know, I don't want to get in anyone's way of teaching kids or whatever, but we can serve as consultants or, you know, questions, something like that. I'm actually, right now, negotiating with United States Secret Service. Because when our president comes to town, we can't fly. And I don't know if anyone here knows that, but even the drones, you cannot fly within a 30 nautical mile radius from Bedminster, which includes, I think, maybe Mawa. Mawa may be cutting into that. But a lot of people don't know that, so they go ahead and fly it. But when I talk to the Secret Service agent in charge of that, they get very annoyed when that happens. But I'm negotiating with them and the FAA special ops to say, these are little toy airplanes. It's not going to catch up to President 747. So we do a lot of government regulations for the drones. We do a lot. We do a lot giving back to community, the kids and everything. So my statement here is, the reason why I showed up tonight is because I didn't know who to approach. And I figure if I come to the board and-
You got all of us.
I got everyone, I can get everyone in one spot, so-
Now, now you're being filmed, so you're-
Oh, I didn't know that. And I met Kim at the Mawa bar and grill, so. Oh, women, women. Not the bar, it's the Mawa bar and grill. I didn't even sexualize you already. But I, I'd like to propose to the board that I want passing cards around. If, if anyone needs any help with aviation, with whatnot, we can get a lot of sponsorship. We, the organization also has a scholarship. So we have an aviation scholarship. We also have a camp that people can send their kids to, but we, we, we have a lot of money to give away, but a lot of times the kids don't apply or whatever. But we have all these programs, so, you know, I don't want, I'm taking more time than usual, but anyway, you guys know how to reach me. I have no idea why I'm getting myself into a business. But, but now that I'm kind of like out of the corporate world, I'm a mechanical engineer, designing airplanes, stuff like that. So, you know, the visiting stuff, I want to kind of give back to the town.
You should come to more board meetings.
Okay, I, I just had a question about the solar. Because Ramapo College is actually putting solar panels over their parking lots. And I've also seen that you could put solar panels over the bleachers of, like, the football field and everything. So would it be worthwhile to install solar panels in other areas and try to get that project going?
I guess it depends on how much we want to spend. We, you know, it's something we can certainly look at. Like I said, there, there's not enough surface area that we're going to get a power company come in and do it for us, so it would be us paying for it. So, I mean, you know, it's certainly something we can take a look at. But, yeah, that was, it was the cost of the thing and sort of that cost benefit that sort of makes that part. But it's, we can, we can definitely look at it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Ryan Richards, four thirteen poets wide, excuse me, I have a call. So I have two fifth graders at Joyce Kimber right now. And I see that the projected completion date is September of 2019. My question perhaps for curriculum instruction is, will there be programs to help innovators and inventors take advantage of such an open-ended space for guided instruction or open-ended innovation? So that when they arrive in the high schools, they're actually equipped with the collaborative tools, with the abilities to make, make do with all of that space, nine thousand square feet, to make sure that their iterative design, their engineering design is actually done while I work in education. Is, is there, is there a step-up program so the middle graders who now have life worth in physical science opportunities can make do with this wonderful investment by, on the part of the district?
Well, at the, at JK, starting this year, we have a brand-new science curriculum, Discovery Science. So that's exciting and certainly leads into, into all of this. At the Ridge, new science curriculum started last year. We're looking, working with Mr. Vander Mullen to update our, our offerings for the exploration classes. And with, with an eye towards this, you know, like kind of back planning, you know, what, what does the high school offer? We took a, kind of a cohesive look at what they've gotten and where can we situate our kids so that they're poised for that. We even talked about, could we do field trips from the middle school to the high school? To use, or JK, to use that spot. So, you know, it's, it's still in, in the future. So we have a little bit of time to figure out where we're going with it, but we're certainly well situated to do all of this.
Well, I'm excited for my kid to get to high school because they might access to that.
Thank you very much.
An answer to your question too. We do, we do send students to various elementary schools for science day. Okay, so this will give us, because we have that room now, the professional development room and the other space, I think this gives us the ability to do the reverse. So instead of us going to the elementary school, we can have the, you know, a grade level from an elementary school come to us to come to have that experience and to work with our kids on some of those programs.
That just made me think about summer and summer programs for coding and for robotics and to have the kids be able to do these things over the summer at the lower grades and at the high school level. So that's a possibility. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Lee, for you, I haven't been, I haven't done what you did, gave us the mic.
Yes, just, just one update regarding the cell phone tower that we spoke about a few meetings ago. Just to give an update on the cell phone tower, the area that it proposes to get to, for anybody that doesn't recall, is property that the board owns in the vicinity of Airmont Road, I'm sorry, Airmont Ave, Airmount Road, in East Mawa Road. The development of RFP was more comprehensive than we initially thought. I'm happy to say that we have the final version of RFP, just got turned over to me yesterday. We'll take a look at that. It should be out available by the end of the month. Just an update for word on that. No other reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fair?
No, just want to thank the administrators in the audience who serve on the STEAM committee. I thank you for Taryn Paiza, our visual arts teacher who's here tonight as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much. On the president's report. Okay, we have District Technology Committee. Do you want to play a little on administrative? Oh, yes, yes.
To, to all of the administrators here tonight to support all of the work that's been done by all of you, please head home to your families. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Okay, so I wanted to let you know that a District Technology Committee has been established this year. So after a decade of not having a district committee in place, the thought was to resurrect it in light of the new technology purchases and plans about the split that we're discussing moving forward. The committee has a representative or two from each school, as well as a library media specialist from each school. Carlos Rosa and our new supervisor of technology, Susan DeVito, are co-chairing this committee. The first meeting was held this morning and they discussed a number of current issues with technology in the district and those things that we would like to correct in the future. They look forward to providing the board, the Technology Committee, an overview of the discussion topics prior to the board's second meeting in January. We also, let's see, the NJECC, NJ, New Jersey Statewide Educational Technology Conference. Dr. Dettoro and Susan DeVito will be presenting at the 2018 NJECC, New Jersey Statewide Educational Technology Conference, on January ninth, 2018, at Montclair State University. Presentation is, presentation is titled "Google Classroom for Administrators." The summary of their presentation in the program booklet reads as follows. Hear from a principal and supervisor on how to successfully roll out Google Classroom. See how administrators can harness the power of Google Classroom and make it their main communication hub. Discover ways to gain early adoption from staff and the importance of continuous professional development. And that is all that I have this evening. Yeah, please, come here. It is.
Carlos, can you fix the heartbeat, please?
Do you have any board committee reports this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
So on Monday night, the Mawa School Foundation had their, their trustees meeting and their grants meeting. So a couple of saved dates and let's see, they're, they're having their casino night on March first, that's coming up pretty soon. They're having their, the Schools Foundation run on April twenty-second. And ladies' night out next year is going to be on October twenty-fifth and is going to be a luau theme. So mark your calendar for that stuff. Right after their trustees meeting, they had their grants meeting and I'm happy to say that, that they approved all the grants that were submitted. So there's going to be some pretty cool stuff. Most grants. Most grants. There's going to be some pretty cool stuff coming down the pike, so check out the Schools Foundation website for more information on those. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? Yes, John?
Yeah, Policy Committee met tonight for the Board of Ed meeting. We continued our review and update of the seven thousand series. And we are going to continue that on December sixth before the next Board of Ed meeting.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Gallo?
I'm just going to give an update on sort of the work plan for negotiations and financing facility. So financing facility, so we've been looking at the STEAM program for some time. And we were also looking at, in the context of the overall capital plan for the district for the next five to ten years. That planning effort is underway. And negotiations, we will soon begin our process of negotiating with the supervisors and principals in the next month or two. Their contract expires on June thirtieth, so that's on our work plan.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. Our board member remarks, additional comments on reports or other non-agenda items? Want to say anything? Yes, Mr. Fair?
I am super excited about STEAM. When we first were invited by administration to participate in the committee work last December, we spent probably, I think we were here for three or four hours. It was quite an extensive time and-
You remember it was cold?
Yes, it was very cold. And a couple of things that struck me right off the bat was sort of the widespread interest of the staff in the project and their input into the process and that the process was open-ended, anybody could pitch an idea. We were not, this is not where we might have ended up, but we did end up at this because a lot of people collaborated on putting it together. Unfortunately, they're not here, but I would like to thank them for their participation in that. And the other comment that came to mind was, when students come to our school district, they're, they're kids. And at the end of the day, some of those kids might do some remarkable things. One of them make cure cancer. One of them may be a Nobel Prize winner. One of them may be a master plumber. And this space, it's a big investment for the community, but at the end of the day, when you ask yourself, what do we get out of it? We get the opportunity to meet those kids and give them the opportunity to be a, a change agent in the future. And hopefully, one day, my hope, idealistic as it may be, is that some kid, one of our students, will come out of this program and do something that we're remarkable, is remarkable and that we're ultimately very, very proud of. So I'm jacked up on this. And I just want to thank everybody for being involved with it. Our administration has done a marvelous job in moving the project very deliberately through the process, engaging a wide part of the community, our teachers, our supervisors, administration staff, outsiders going to the other districts. It's been a, it's been a very thoughtful product, program.
I'd like to thank clients and facilities too for being involved in this.
And curriculum, curriculum is involved as well, so.
For being involved in this and the entire board. I want to thank everybody.
Right, and that's, you know, like Mike said, this isn't, you know, sort of how it, we might not have ended up with all the input. It's certainly not where we started. So there was, there were, there was a lot of input by a lot of different people. A lot of changes were made. Some pretty drastic changes that we had to change back and there was, there was a lot of input. It is. There, there was, there was a lot of input that it was definitely a, a cool thing to be, thing to be a part of to see how, you know, how it all works. This, projects like this so far, this is how things should go. Where everybody has, you know, everybody's got the opportunity to, you know, to voice their, their opinion and, you know, be able to hear from everybody. So, yeah, really cool process.
Thank you. Hey, old business. We have a motion to move on old business. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Conoco. Any discussions on old business? You take role call, please.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
I'd like to take fifteen, I have a motion to proceed with fifteen A through T. Now, Mr. Denise, second by Mr. De Silva. Any questions?
I think it's worthwhile highlighting that M and N are the two initiatives that'll get our STEAM project off the ground in a very official way, so.
Agreed. And I'd like to thank the estate of Michelle's bed for giving the school an additional donation. So thank them very much for that.
What's the total? We're over a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Oh, one, approximately a hundred fifty-nine.
Hundred fifty-nine, yes. So, real money.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, so role calls, please, on that.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
I am abstaining though on check eight eight five two zero B and eight eight six two four. My apologies, Cheryl.
I'm abstaining on check number eight eight five nine seven.
Thank you both, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to take sixteen A through U. I have a motion to proceed with that. Ms. Conoco, second by Dr. Morthe. Any questions, comments? On any of those items? Things good to go? All right, you take role call, please.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Okay, public questions or comments? Note this section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Okay, Evelyn Saltback, what do you think, Don Ted Place? Two, two things. Okay, there was a pretty bad accident outside the high school today. I have stated before that I think having the two exits right next to each other is dangerous. And, you know, it, it would be terrible if nothing was done and then something really fatal happened there to, to a student or anyone else. I would like the board to look into somehow reconfiguring it so that the, one of the exits, the one preferably coming out of the high school parking lot is closed off and that's rerouted somehow. So that you do not have new drivers attempting to make lefts and rights with, you know, looking at three different areas where cars are coming. And it, it's especially bad right now because two oh two's closed, so the traffic is extremely heavy and it's fast. So I'd like that. And then the other question I had was, in fact, my kids actually attended the parenting class that they used to have here at the high school. Do we have any program that students who are interested in early education can work with the kids at the YMCA building? STEAM, do you know?
We, as far as I know, we do not. We have had students placed in structured learning experiences in our elementary schools, students who want to be teachers. We have a course called Education as a Career, but no students at the Y to my knowledge.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that would be something feasible to have, you know, students be able to interact, you know, with the kids there, you know, and get some hand, one-on-one, hands-on experience with the, with the young, young kids. So. Thank you for the suggestion. Three suggestions, thank you very much. Thank you.
Just one more, a little bit. You're presenting the STEAM to the council and the planning board?
The, the document.
The architects.
The architects will-
The architects will present to the planning board on the twenty-seventh?
I don't know when.
I don't know.
That's the next meeting.
I anticipate it'll be soon.
Now, after that, do you have to go to the mayor and council? No. So we have to the planning board shovel in the ground?
No.
No.
Yeah, flip this one again, yeah.
There's a lot of other steps.
Permit.
So we're gonna, we go to the planning board on the seventeenth and we complete that design development. We're still in that stage and the construction documents is complete in March. We go out for a bid in April, so people bid on the project. And we award the bid hopefully at our May Board of Ed meeting, shovel in the ground right after that. Maybe even that night.
Bring your shovel. It, it's important on this schedule, so we have September nineteenth is the opening of the building. But for Mr. Pascal's purposes, his student, his course book, that the students will be looking at to choose courses, will have to be, will be in play in February of two thousand nineteen. So this schedule, we really have to stay on top of it. We did, we made considering-
You don't want to disappoint the kids.
No, we want to, if we could, we'd do this tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
So we have in- So we have included in our budget a construction management position to make sure that somebody's watching this sort of diligently from a cost and timeline perspective.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.